City Council meeting, the regular meeting for Thursday, April 14, 2022 is called to work. Maria, could you please make the roll call?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Ann Marusso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfelter. Thank you.
Please stand. Please stand.
Let's unify the United States of America and see the Republic which stands on a nation of the soul for the freedom of justice.
Data, do we know? Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a motion on the City Council regular meeting agenda for tonight's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the council committee as presenting. I second it.
This is a group consent to approve tonight's agenda as presented, roll call, yes.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ann Marusso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelter.
Aye.
Thank you, that's fine.
Item number three on the agenda is public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, citizens wishing to address the City Council, or any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's subtail form to the city clerk or following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. It will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda, and the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and asked to state name and the community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So I am opening up public comment this evening, and we're going to start with one that we do have a public comment forum front, and that's Dear General Mueller and Kyla Dale. Is that did I get it right?
Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak. I'm Mayor General Mueller in Billtown, California.
Keela Dale.
Oh, yeah. How you doing, California?
We're here because we wanted to let the council know that we're starting up a new event. This will be at the historic fairgrounds right next door. I did bring that poster. So this is a smoke chase, because this is a first responder fair, because people are not really well informed and prepared for the emergency and the disasters that have been occurring recently. Also, it's incredibly confusing. Nobody knows where do I go to evaluate, where do I go buy animals, what do I do for personal safety, what do I do about home and land prep? This is all bringing it together in one place. In addition, we're also going to make a fair, so I can still work on food, a little bit of live music, but more than that, including the demonstrations, we're trying to engage the public in the community to being self-reliant, self-sufficient, and to get their own information. We do know you do TOT funds, and we have submitted a grant, but Kyla can here speak to the first responders and enroll.
Okay, thank you. So I have been really excited working on this project and helping oversee a lot of the agencies, and I just wanted to list some of the agencies that are fully on board and fully participating in this event. One being Amber Sheriff's Office, Amber Fire, Cal Fire, Forest Service, CHP. We have a bunch of other ones. The State Insurance Commissioner Washington gave the event along with a lot of other people. We have been advertising this big and working with different agencies to push out this information, and we're having a great response from it. A lot of the events that we're doing within agencies, we are working together with law enforcement and fire to do the dump, the fire chief with the dump tank, we're doing an engine pool, we're doing all kinds of interactive things for people to see. We also are doing a full auto extrication for kids to view, we're landing a helicopter there for people to see with reach, and a lot more of our events.
So basically, the idea is to get as many eyeballs there as possible. We do have a fee of five dollars at the gate. We weigh that. All of our volunteers are told to someone to have a port, and they just come in. We do need to cover our costs, because the fairgrounds isn't offering, and it shouldn't be, it is a business too. So at this time, do you have any questions about what we're trying to accomplish, or?
Um, I did want to make sure that we got a digital copy of the poster for our website or in our Facebook page. It's called the Met Gala page. So it needs to be out there slightly as much as possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Again, what is the date? It is May 21 and 22. Good call. It's from 11:00 to 6:00 on Saturday. We're trying to get a little bit later in the day, because there's a Joe Canada, and we want to be very cognizant, that we don't want anything loud going on when there's a horse show. And then 11:04 on the next day. We have over eighty agencies and businesses participating, and we're still getting calls. They're also going to use this as approval concept for the rest of the state. We do have enough interest where no one's actually put everything together. We had safety fairs, we can do a little bit of one part of emergency preparedness, so they have a few, I guess you'd say vendors, but they never put it all together, nor made it interesting or fun for any people. So.
In addition to posters, we have handout slogan.
Yes, we have word detectors. We are trying to keep our budget as low as possible. This is not a money-making endeavor by any means. So we are padding out flyers. We're doing a lot of social media. We've been just told today that Insight from Cap Radio is going to take us on as a show. We are working with CBS News Radio, the morning show. This is literally word of mouth, where people are starting to reach out to us, because it is the California State Insurance, the insurance commissioner is coming, Cap Fair Plan is going to be there, the California Fire Safety Council themselves are going to be there. We're getting a lot of state, what you call bodies, agencies, law and state. There's your department, right? State Fire Marshal is going to be there. They're all interested in what we're doing here, because nobody's ever put it together as one entire event. So, thank you. Can I leave this for you guys to prepare?
Also, who would like to speak during the public comment? And you don't have to raise your hand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you getting here and coming.
Appreciate you.
We didn't do the kids walk, the boys, so. I just want to take this along and introduce myself. My name is Cameron Beckley, and I'm the newest tenant on Main Street. I'm taking over the world's hardwood make. And I wanted to introduce myself and my business and my food supply. I'm pretty excited. Although I don't live in city proper, I always go to school here. And a lot of our functions happen here in public. My company is Law &amp; Order, Police Supply, and I'm opening. Right, and so it just fires me up. That's more math. I just wanted to invite everybody, if you see my truck out front, come in and say hello, get to know me, ask your question. If some apprehension. But I just want to be open to you guys. Initially, it wasn't very nice, but it's normal, so.
I'm still hoping to get through that ribbon cut.
But it's a few more sign-offs from the state, and once that happens, we'll prove to the public. Outside the box.
Thank you. Anyone else in City Hall that would like to speak under public comment?
Just wanted you to know. It's good seeing you here. I got a kind of strange question to ask you. I just found out last hour that my teeth bones are richer than the pressure. It wonders that Costco is selling Russian bread. Yeah. It's something I bought a few months ago. And if they add a package, give them a Russian packaging, and since the only cup and everything, and they they have a long. They have no change of packaging. Meat package was a crab leg. We said nothing that didn't. It's pretty, pretty. So if it gets caught, so doesn't know what we do, I think. Or a slower Russian bread.
Thank you very much, John. Have any Russian. Is there anyone else in City Hall that would like to speak under public comment? Is there anyone on this Zoom meeting that would like to speak? To do so by pressing bar. So this. If people. Out at the Trincherro Family Vineyard, which is in the city of Plymouth, I saw some comments about noise, and I wanted to reiterate publicly that we live in an agricultural county, that this council on numerous occasions has reiterated the fact that we agree with that and also want to promote agriculture and open space and those activities, and the city of Plymouth approving the development agreement for that vineyard embraced agriculture. So you're in a limacy going through our town and on the same day, and you may smell things, and you may see animals doing what you don't like sometimes, but we live in agriculture. Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is consent calendar. I would entertain a motion. First and second to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Stan. Marusso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelter.
Item number six on the agenda is public carrots. Item 6.1 is a first meeting by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Plymouth amending Title 19, Chapter 19.84 Outdoor Sales and Storage and Chapter 19.98 Glossary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And tonight, as the mayor said, is an ordinance amendment to our zoning code. Over the last couple of years, the city has been, there's been an increased interest in mobile vending and due to the popularity of that type of business and also the COVID pandemic. And to accommodate those businesses that had to close their doors when the pandemic first hit, the city issued temporary use permits, and those are this, those use permit to allow these businesses to continue to function and business into a mobile business. In August of last year, the planning commission discussed this topic and decided that it was in the city's best interest to review the code and to make potential changes to the code. And then reviewing it in depth, in depth, we realized just one small the existing ordinance would make it easier for mobile vendors to be able to operate in our city and also allow for an approval process that allows staff to make sure they are in appropriate locations and are not going to have an effect on other businesses and okay and safe. Attached. Use permit required. Also, those. In that can take. They are recommended at an exchange to an administrative use permit, and that goes just through the. There's still appeals process that goes with it, and notice neighbors are notified in that type of administrative. Attached to the ordinance that we dropped tonight, and also redlining of the existing ordinance. You can see there's just a couple of changes in the first part of the ordinance. We also, it also requires adding the definition of mobile vendor to the glossary section of our municipal code. Is that any questions?
I was impressed that there was all such minor tweaks to the table where they had and just just crafted decidedly enough to make it happen, that with the whole process of rewriting.
So we had a big, huge process, and we were going through it over and over and over and over again, and then we were, we had like a like whole moment, and we just, it's just, we're achieving what we want instead of reading, imagining what we are, so, thank you.
I agree. I appreciate you did a good job. So we should streamline it much easier.
Much easier. I agree. Thank you, Darren. I did have one question. You talked about the notification. That be like a hundred fee.
Yes. It's the difference. For administrative use permit, once a decision has been made, a notice will be sent to the neighbors providing them of the decision and of their opportunity, the process to avail of it.
So at this time, the public hearing is open, and if anyone would like to comment on this issue, this is your opportunity. I can comment to ten. Is there anyone in Zoom that would like to comment on the public hearing? You can do so by pressing star nine to wave your hand. Great, so the public hearing is just continuing through.
No, so what you will do is, after a comment, you will close it, and then you can entertain a motion or have a discussion.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure that all the council members have an opportunity to comment or question anything they wanted to before we close the public hearing. Okay, so the public hearing on the ordinance change is closed. Item number seven on the agenda is.
Sorry, we're going to need, sorry, we're going to need a motion and much.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
God, I thought I had the power.
So I would introduce, and maybe first reading by title only of an ordinance, City Council, City Department amending Title 18, Chapter 19.84 Outdoor Sales and Storage and Chapter 19.98 Glossary.
Second, I'm going to third. I said that.
Could we have a roll call though, please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Stan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ann Marusso.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelter.
Aye.
Thank you.
So we are down to item number eight on the agenda. Council staff communications, brief reports. This city, the interim city manager is not here this evening. Do we have a prepared statement or, okay. So I would open it up to mayor and council member reports. We can start with Councilmember White.
Okay.
Councilmember Stan.
Ann Marusso.
Councilmember Ann Marusso.
I got nothing.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Nothing here.
And I'm good for the Zoom meeting. So, item number 8.3 on the agenda is any future agenda items. Okay. At this time, the council is moving into a closed session, which means we will need to clear the hall, and we will need to turn off the Zoom. There will be a screen that just goes on to the next special meetings, and there will be a prompt.
Yeah. Close session, so the section. It was. Lament. Paper negotiators regarding the inner city position.
And we hide a taste while we're waiting to come back.
I'm going to wish you.
Better go.
The meeting is called outage quarter.
Oh, you know it.
What's happening?
Yeah. You have to turn the audio back on.
I figured out the spotlight thing.
Maria, did you want to do the required session?
I am, but it's good to get the audio live on.
Okay. My question was, do you want me to do it all?
I'll do it. I'll do it. Thank you.
Okay, council just made a closed session to discuss the two items listed. The agenda, council received information, provided direction, otherwise will report for action.
Regular meeting for April 14, 2022 is closed adjourned. Um, so Maria, do you talk to that, Peter? Roll call, please. Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
Here.
Councilmember Marissa stepped out. Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfelter.
Here.
And the planning commission. Aaron, do we have all five planning commissioners?
We have three planning commissioners here. Do you like, do you need them? For the record, that's easiest. We have Commissioner Cozart here, Commissioner Gomes. I see, right? And Chair Crackerall.
And are there any planning commissioners on still?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda or the joint city council planning commission meetings this evening.
I make a motion to approve the joint city council meeting, special meeting agenda.
I'll send that. So we have a roll call vote, please. And as we go through the council, Maria, if we could also go through planning commissioners that were named by Aaron.
Sure.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Stan.
Hi.
Councilmember Marissa stepped out. Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelter.
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Amy Bellows.
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Cozart.
Aye.
And then planning Commissioner Chair Bellpro.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening is approved. Um, item number two on the agenda is public comment. As special meetings, citizens wishing to address the city council or planning commission, they do so at this time concerning any matter on the agenda. Under provisions of California Government Code, the city council and the planning commission is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or urgent need to take immediate action arose after posting on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to provide public comment? And the public comment is restricted to the workshop information.
Yeah, I was just, I was looking at the agenda. There's no comment shared for me. So, very wish, over here, here, at that.
You have additional in your office, Maria?
Just because it's under public comment, um, the only thing on the agenda this evening is work. Informational space. That agenda, so, but how? Well. Anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment, public comment is restricted to the agenda item listed. As agenda item here.
Nobody's answered this.
Okay, at this time, we have. Realize. Um, I want to be. Not you. Informational of. Questions for. Information development. Oh. It's all yours, Richard.
You had a merit, council and honey commission? Okay. This, this is new stuff since I've been doing much of this. And give you a quick outline of what we're talking about. The designs and just to let you know, I tend not to actually read all the slides in stride. But mostly I'll be talking about the items and in kind of in this order. The purpose, slide. For those who have not met me, I have been working for the city since 2008 as a part-time employee. Then the city manager, Jason Flynn, called me, he knew me from our time with ODI, and said, I need help with water sewer and developments. And he wasn't kidding. City had a number of problems with state underwater system and sewer system. They were missing a kind of completed general plan update that seemed several re-subdivisions and challenges. And he knew that I had done. Years of. Session of planning people you had over those years. I was stunned. About two years ago, I got all the city manager. Nice. That's that had some more help with was coming up with new development in the city and I basically told him I really didn't want to do everything that I had done with the projects in 2010, 11, 12, since the Melton or Bridge. I was a lot of staff were, I need staff awards, no resolution. He studied, he stood ill and I'm retired. And my wife keeps asking me why I'm up here so often when I'm retired. So deal was that I would assist your planner, Aaron. It's very clear that Aaron's in charge of these projects. I'm there to aid her. But in our discussions recently on getting the environmental process started for the strange project, I had made a comment that I want to have a kind of overview of the whole process. I think I made a comment on the meeting. Here I am. So that's what this is about. And we just got to say, welcome questions during the presentation. I'll leave you to decide how you want, may want to hand deal of questions to the public. It's not a meeting, but it's journey. But I may defer an answer until we have the presentation that I recognize that I'm copying by more detail than he can go back and forth with the business itself.
Um, Richard, I'd prefer if we go through the presentation that anyone had any questions, we have the Q and A.
Sure.
At that time, but that's agreeable to everyone.
That's, it's not a meeting. The presentation's not going to get into specifics on timeframes. And I will admit to you that a lot of this material came from the work we did over twelve years. And so I have not tried to go through, update any timeframes or deadlines or things like that. But we will certainly do all of that moving forward with anything on other projects. The, yeah, we're not going to be talking about budget specifics, although I have some samples, it's a little, it's the most recent project, I'm pretty all clear with it. And I'm really not going to get into the annexation, sphere of influence process with Lafford. If you want to talk about it, I can do that. So. So, Stephanie Ryan is general plan. This is kind of like my, I working with developments in the city. General plan is a document that has goals, policies, recommended actions, the things that have gone through extensive hearing process, council should be familiar with them. And one of the most important things in it is the land use map. That sets the overall view of the city. So I have a copy, but I'll show you the map. Um, plus circulation. And there's an expectation that there'll be master plans to come forward. And we've done a lot of you of those since the general plan was adopted. And policy. Plan, build a new development. Yeah, I kind of. I recall standing right here and talking with the council about, you have a major decision on water agency pipeline project. And at the time, the general plan was still had been worked on and the pipeline project had not been. And the, so I told the council, general plan, I grow. But if you really want to do that, you need to get the water supply. Aren't so sure about growing. You don't want to have the debt of the, of the cost of the pipeline project, then we could probably do something with the wells. Then you're going to be liberated pretty much what you got today. And the council might have approved water project. So that to me was affirmation that, yeah, general plan is still good from that standpoint. And it's been our guiding study of them ever since. So let me give you a few examples of what's in the general plan. So there's overall policies in there. And here's an example of land uses that heavier traffic should be located on higher capacity load rates. But that is, from that kind of a policy, flows a number of. Maybe it's the wall. Sorry about that. Presumably Riley for development, for efficient roadway network. One I really want to point out is connectivity with them between neighborhoods. I'll show you that a little more when we get to the map. Good design to con neighborhood traffic. In my career, traffic was one of, always one of the big issues with the city. Everybody's a traffic engineer. Learned that early on, so get over it kind of thing. So engineer, I could tell somebody, you know, have a pipe system, do this, or the P ought to be that big. Comes to streets, I guess. So, I understand. But speeds are too high on streets is the universal complaint. I heard one just the other day. Old sack. Old Sacramento. And, you know, I, I get it, but bottom line is, people are driving those vehicles. They're driving them at a speed they feel comfortable doing. And if we're really going to work on that, cycle enforcement. And this is, there's a few things you got to have in place in order to have effective enforcement like radar. Uh, engineering studies on the street, streets where you use radar. Um, but there are design techniques that one can do to help reduce neighborhood traffic speeds and, and I. Started a few of those and sent them out. Um, and I would leave it to you who live there to tell me how successful we were. Um, I expect to see more of it in the future. Um. I also want to mention this level of service issue. This is one of the things actually has gone away now in the state in terms of, of environmental requirements. They don't, they didn't longer do that level of service as an environmental issue. They use a different measure called medical miles traveled. So, uh, you're not company, I already going to see both because the general plan calls for level of service gap definition. So you'll be able to compare the results of the analysis of those kinds of things and see if you look like. Um, but level of service is one of those things that drives more lanes on roadways. And I would, I can assure you, you know, I'll talk about the circulation plan in a minute. I'm going to, I'll wait a minute, so. Uh, so one of the recommended actions, and there are many in the general plan, is that you, you would review the third fair plan and come back with a final, uh, circulation plan, which was, uh, and go ahead of the map. So this is what the general plan map looks like. Obviously, this is the existing, uh, cities of time. You have a sphere of influence of kind of like this, which has been changed how the E I station should develop, should go a bit. Um, but the light yellow, they're all residential development, uh, that's being planned for, um. The other color is higher intensity use, and there's actually a couple different shapes, yellow. But I can't see them very well. If, um, in the general plan, I, I think you stay in one of them since this was, this was, but. Um, it was pretty white. So, next slide. So this is the circulation plan that was in the general plan. Yeah, this is old Sacramento Road. Centerville Road goes up this way, and it's like small town road, or state highways this way. All these green lines are anticipated roadways that will be built with new development as that occurs. And the key takeaway from all this was that at the time, the city was very concerned about highway becoming a four-lane or, or highway. They really wanted to try to keep it as two-lane facility, recognizing, or to do that, you're going to have access controls. You have to have turn lanes, although there was a desire not to see it. City was currently up on, on Old Street, you wanted to see some level of, of media landscaping and some viewpoints. Um, so in order to make that work, you still have this level of development, you need to have good, a good collective roadway network around, parallel to highway. So that's what this kind of shows going on. Through the next slide. Uh, this was, was actually adopted in two thousand eleven, we did the circulation plan update and adopted the impact fees. I'll talk more about impacts later. But, yeah, state highway here, uh, Old Sacramento Road. Zimpville Parkway was one of the collectors that would go all the way out. That parallel route to Old Sacramento Road. We're looking at a, a, a parallel collector street. Um, the Jewish property and a western one, uh, midway between Old Sacramento and Zimpville Parkway. And I know you care about the, uh, issue of bare grounds. This, this collector roadway that runs between Old Sac and Zimpville has the second that runs through bare ground, so that's going to be problematic.
Runs through a rocky over there.
Yeah, wasn't there, we didn't have. Uh, personally spoke with people at the fair, uh, back when we did this, and they're like, no, we, we can work something out. Um, but it didn't happen. And it would be, uh, pretty difficult to pull that off now. Um, not to mention the fact that the intersection, the highway right there would be a five-legged intersection. And we could do a roundabout there, but it would take more ride away to pull round about to get the extra lane, so they're all, they're in properly. Uh, we'd farm more expenses to be counted on. So, we're going to, we're looking at what we can do to modify this. Um, that's the main takeaway of the circulation. Check my notes here. So the other thing was, obviously at this time, we actually have projects, Zimpville project was going through the approval process. There was another project up here called Cottage Gold that's since gone away. Um, and I know, I want to say five or six years ago, we had a meeting with the property owners and they were looking at possibly providing that project. It's not going to be this way, so.
Good design.
Or.
It was a decent design.
Um, it had a couple of problems, but not bad. The bigger issue was that the infrastructure for sewer, you didn't go through a long way around here, so. So, yeah. Uh, it may come back, though, I mean, projects never see the whole thing go away. Um, but I, I, one of the points I wanted to make about the general plan is even though you, you cover a map to show, okay, we want to see development here, 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 here. That is a great development. It, it's a step, but it doesn't create, so. Okay, so you got the general plan. Next comes zoning. Zoning is a refinement of the land use shown in the general plan. And, uh, there were detail, there, there are back-to-back ordinance. Um, so you have a whole code in your, in your, a whole section in your city government on zoning, it's, uh, I don't like team. Uh, detailed language requirements, building setbacks, lot coverage, a lot of details that, I, I think you probably. One thing that councils tend to, and obviously planning officials are pretty aware of, zoning code. So I wasn't going to get into a whole lot about that, but it really sets the stage for a property owner or a developer to actually give ready to submit a development application. So, that's the application and the review process there. Um. Starts with the developer making an application for, for the property owner. Um, it's pretty common for, uh, a developer who worked jointly with a property, whether they have an option on the property or some kind of a joint venture agreement, whatever. It's unusual for a property owner who want to undertake all this stuff on their own. Um, and, and in develop, putting together that application, the developer really has to get down to the grasshacks. Okay, here's the property I'm looking at. But is it showing for the general plan? What's the zoning like? Can I make this work financially? That of course includes cost of all the processing, the cost of engineering, lawyers, and their own planners. Um, pretty much any large development, regional land planner, uh, environmental review process. It adds up. I mean, I know Zimpville's well over a million dollars, well over a million dollars, and I think the Jewish projects are pretty close to that. So, um, it's a lot of money. And. I think one of the things that property owners tend to, you got to realize is that they're kind of at the bottom of that thinking board. Because you, the developer has to look at. How much can I sell a house for? A lot in the house. I know the market is, I can push it maybe a little bit. Um, and they start backing out all of these costs. And their profit, their uncertainty factors, what's left, so they can afford to pay the property owner there. I've certainly seen projects, I know O'Day, that property owners are like, no, I'm not going to sell it back, so. Or not, before they even get to that step. So, so they go through all that, fill up the application, staff could use it for complete this, Aaron, the city engineer. Um, and, and how well does it fit with all the other city plans that are in place? Master plan for water, sewer facilities, any drainage, um, and of course, the, the actual, and roadways. And there's going to be back and forth in there. They come in with a plan, you look at it, you know, you left out this, you didn't cover that. They look at that, and, and the line I like to use with developers is, you can go ahead and submit this way if you want. Have a risk, it will be a hearing to tell you, tell the council or the planning mission that we don't like it this way, and you want to see you change it. Or, or with a star, and you get it to that, that part along. Um, because our goal, frankly, is that which is to bring you something that the other day that meets all of your goals and policies and things that you spelled out in the general plan and zoning code. Or, you know, for the project, I'll, I'll worry about that as well. So, uh, another tip, here's basis for compensating cost recovery. Um, your council has always been very clear that we need deposits on hand to do all this, so the public's not paying for this to. Good review part. Since Steve and, I should start. That. Especially with city, calculations, public care. All that, just to bring you a complete package. And not ask you to approve these piece there. Again, this is discussed back with Zimpville and Centerville Ridge projects that, um. We don't want to go this way, and we don't think it's right to put you in position of approving one piece of a project and suddenly feeling, well, you did that, how you going to do this? Want you to see all of it. And so, that's what planning on doing. Um. And so certification, the environmental document, and judicial approval of the map for the project, all come together. Um, I will point out there was one difference in Zimpville and Centerville Ridge, because they had to be excluded to do it. So it wasn't, we didn't have to do a approval of the project, pause, open the annexation process. That, for everything you've got building on now, that's, that will be the case. Um, but there's optional things that developer have made or posed. Uh, development plan and design guidelines, those are things that Zimpville and Centerville Ridge spent a lot of time on because they wanted to have a project they were proud of. And, uh, so there are special documents that are part of the approval process, um, that are. They're baked into the overall project approval documents. Um, but the key one is the development agreement. Uh, this actually supersede your ordinances, it's an opt-in by ordinance, and I'll go ahead and go to the next, next slide on that. Um, before I talk about the development, you know, I want to talk about the max cells. I use the phrase tentative map. So the developer comes forward, and again, we're talking about residential stuff, not, not a commercial project, uh, or, or something that's scandalous, scandalous parcel. You're actually set by creating lots, whether they're for commercial or residential use. Um, the tentative map, uh, typically is for a lot of, a lot of parcels, um. With fewer parcels, you can, it was called parcel map, although we wanted to extend the same process, but it's kind of a parcel map. So, quite a detail. Um. Any, that are, that are tied, you have an ordinance to specify what a tentative map is, so. Um, and that's what you, that's what you'll see during the process. The city only. People standing this. Once that's. It's not, I'll talk about those more in a. Development procedure, putting together what's all the finding. Final map. Document that creates the lots, they can sold after they build in the park, they'll stay in California. Um. Um. You, you buy a lot, Zimpville, a lot, you're. They'll give you the number of what, that's the only little discussion you need, because the map has all the survey information, but survey, you know, survey, here's your parts. Yeah, there's very specific that are required by law, it's filed with the county recorder, and, uh, this last bullet points, when I'm going to talk about. It may not look exactly like a tentative. And there's reasons for that. The tentative map is, is prepared without all the detailed engineering. And when you get into the detailed engineering, I should design improvements. Um, you may change something, but have a little different curvature. I'll show you an example. Having this, so, um, but these substantial compliance is determined by the city engineer. So, next slide here. Zimpville tentative map. It's a huge piece of paper, I'm sorry, you can't really read it. Um, but, uh, the table, the shields on the lot areas, cross sections for the roadways. And all this on the map is required in accordance. I know some cities don't require all that stuff, they have scanners for all these things, you don't do that. Um, but this city's look, look like it's contour lines in there, it's had a lot of stuff on that map. Um, and. Go to the next slide, and this is, uh, a portion of the Zimpville tentative map. Um, right where Zimpville Parkway meets Port Drive. You can see on this, this drawing, it's just got a lot of numbers, it shows contours, uh, has some dimensions, there's some bearings, angles, details. Surveyor can go out and figure out where this is. This is the final map looks like, same, same spot, because Zimpville Parkway, Port Drive now, and she has a couple of diverse curves in here, they have to do that. The lots in the, based on the, our repeat of the survey. Um, the map shows it's coming in with a couple of angles. Um, those are pretty minor, minor details, city engineers certify those, it's a city substantially, uh, component of the tentative map. There's, there's no real, uh, hard and fast rules to what substantial compliance actually is. And there can be disagreements. Um, I will say there was one on Zimpville that was a planner, the city engineer, and me, and I lost. Uh, so there's a couple more cul-de-sacs in Zimpville that the tentative map initially showed. But then they'll get through their phase, but, yeah, that's, that's okay. Um. So, this. Little bit of stuff. So the, uh, so the map that comes, the tentative map that comes to the planning mission, the council. Will include a long list of conditions of approval. Um, as I mentioned, we have Zimpville over ninety items on the list. And some of them are pretty straightforward, uh, having insurance, uh, name of city, official insurance, retire contribution. That's pretty standard, but that has an ongoing requirement. Uh, some of the conditions are tied to first map. Uh, for example, the time when Zimpville was approved, we did not have citywide sewer or water, uh, master plan for the distribution system. So we called, you have to realize first. Um, before we start, because we're not going to let you start building and then find out something you did as, as a thing with a lot of bigger scale master plan. Um, the, uh, some of the conditions are tied in each phase. And some are specific, for example, extending Zimpville Parkway to Old Sacramento Road, uh, with the final map creating forty-five percent of the lots. So a hundred and sixty-four lots of sixty-five, they got to complete that roadway out. It won't be. Full group of us, but it will get second access. The fire go match requires, uh, you reach two hundred blocks, you need to have that second, second access, so. I remember we were aware of that at the time, and so we used that fifty-five percent number, because it also fit in the sewer, because. Based on the, the story, that it worked with good design. So the city engineer maintains that the list of all these conditions and what their status is. Um, okay, nice. So. There were some other things that were specific to Zimpville. Um, that aren't necessarily, you know, every set of conditions, but would actually reference all the nation measures that, but the, uh, are tied in conditions. Um, that aren't necessarily in every set of conditions, but would actually reference all the nation measures that might be, uh, tied in conditions. Sometimes mitigation measures after years and years go by. Lost in shuffles and you can buy, uh, type of conditions, um, that goes I mentioned at the end. Quite well. And we. It's lovely, certain, daily services that are, uh, I mentioned, sewer. It was a bit of a grand. Developer did provide a patch that was needed for the grant, so when he got done, uh, for the project. Fire is in the Parkway right away, project got completed forty-nine, we already done that, but, uh, we wanted to make sure it was in the conditions, so. I would have it, still had it there. Uh, and then they had to do an extensive analysis of the water system. Uh, to make sure that it worked in each phase and that was one of the things that we found out, realized, oh, it's getting. Uh, some additional things that are outside the project. And that's one of the things that we try to get developers to do early on in their efficient rig work, I've got to buy those sort of things, is they need a. P I R. Is there? So. Just some examples again, yeah. Okay. So the development plan was scheduled to present in Zinfandel and Cherno Ridge was, you know, created by the developer. Um, they were detailed together, um, we're not exactly in force of the zoning code, so we made, because they were approved, it's part of it. They then opened the project, same thing for design guidelines and these generally contained architecture homes. Developer wanted to make sure that there was a decent variety of home styles and so forth, so they wrote a pretty extensive set of time guidelines. And, and those are optional. Development agreement. Oh, I wanted to mention landscaping and water conservation. This can be a big deal. Um, I'm, I'm talking to people internally about putting more conditions on future projects, for example, the lots and yards. I personally don't think you, you know, you raise a several from the police, people who are accurate. But the front yards. There's other ways you can do landscape, but it could look very nice and not require anywhere a good amount of water. Um, that one we do. We had a whole, we had a whole presentation on this back in the day. Well, by the way, many of these slides are recital from earlier presentations, so. Um, the, the next one there. This is one of those came from Myers Nave, uh, and I did a presentation back in two thousand eleven, oh, it's certainly it's a whole workshop. But. So what is a development agreement? From the grid, from the city and developer. Um, activate ordinance, so supersede other ordinance provisions she's boarding out in place. Uh, it's granted such that rights says they're defined in the D A. Um. I didn't really get into this, but the map process, uh, typically grants some level of vested rights if they've done their homework properly and filed the right kind of vesting, vesting map. Um, but, uh, D A can go far beyond this in just the vesting map process. Uh, it's not mandatory, but it can be added to the both parties and it's covered under state law. If you want to get a little bit of government code or read about it, there's the section. Explain. So there are the dangers of the city having a development agreement and. You can recreate with the project, you can lower rule your, your own limitations in your ordinances, you can, without, without affecting the overall city code. Um, it, it's basically customized for the project for both the developer and for the city. Um, it's a flexibility and imposing requirements. There's things you can do, uh, that you couldn't impose on a developer, but if they're willing to do it, put it in D A and now it's. Good for going forward with the project. Developer sells it back to somebody else, survives with it, um, so they're bound by it. Insurance, it can actually be built and it's very good for large and multi-use projects. Next slide. So developer. Typically wants to see a few things. They want certainty. They want to have. A turns long. And the Zinfandel D A is twenty-five years, which is actually pretty long. The most you could get out of a tentative map under the state rules, uh, which you follow, is I think ten years. Uh, it locks in the rules. Blocks in fees, blocks in the land use requirements and frankly, it prevents the future city council from having to change a part of the project. Frankly, that's, that is a number yes. Um, and it's custom for the project. And let's see, so the, uh, you have P Ls determined, vested rights, I talked about these obligations, developer and city. Name that's, okay, tax, and rest of, next few slides, I'm going to go with more details of Zinfandel and actually applies to Cherno Ridge as well. Uh, we need to, to push that case. Slide. So I mentioned twenty-five years of Zinfandel. Uh, there are some pieces in there for extensions, but they're kind of. By the wayside now, so it's, we're still twenty-five years. We're ten years of. That's, that's forty percent of the life of the D A. But they developed, uh, I think they actually, they filed three maps, but I think the third, third unit really hadn't started much construction on it yet, so. Only about fifteen percent of the lots in that sold. So, um, it's only a lot slower than they counted off. So they're glad they got the term that they asked for. Um, the, uh. Uh, there's provisions for some extensions, you know, yeah, I say they're not going to be, uh, going to play. Um, there's some things in the, in the D A that are beneficial to the city that will continue. Uh, and I'll talk about community benefit fund. You know, so, so that is one and the vested rights. Okay, so we have the right to develop, growing approval documents. I mentioned earlier that, you know, the future council, if they change the zoning law or something like that, it's a lot. Um. They pay the current things, give impact fees as they're updated. So they're not getting a break on any of the fees. Um, there are, uh. There's, um. Even provisions in the D A that if you amend the fees to include things that are listed along with this. Came out of the general plan of things the city need on our take, like gateway monuments. General plan for that sort of thing, but if you do develop a plan and you put it into your impact fees and apply citywide, then they apply the city. Going forward, obviously, once a building business issue, then that stops. The, uh, future phases would provide that getting, uh, those. Uh, there's some limitations on any new rules and of course, if there's a deception in state federal law, we can start with that. In general, if the city adopts a new rule, it applies citywide, applying serious. Um, uh, and then of course, they pay for the process processing, the building permits, all existing fees and pretty tough base. So the, um. Developer has some obligations out of all that. They have to build the neighborhood parks within the project, dedicate the land and build in the project. And there was a community park obligation, which I will, I will tell you, it's not worked out for the plant. Um, we'll come back to you on details about that in the future. But, um, they, they took on all this move of paying parking wreck fee. On it. And parking wreck, impact fees are uncomplicated, is you have another ordinance. That's in accordance with state law called, called C R B acts, it's come years ago. That you can require dedications of land for neighborhood parks based on the formulas and it's in the. State law, it's in your code. Problem is, it's only for the land, it's getting built. So with the impact fee programs, if you have. Well-developed new pack fee program, um, you can include things like community parks and neighborhood parks, all that stuff, and being able to build. Or. You can use the D A to get the same thing done. And, um, the city actually never really did its own parking wreck fee. Um, they're kind of piggyback on APRA's fee program and they actually didn't even adopt your. Original fee that APRA recommended something less. It's never really clear what exactly was supposed to be included. I know I personally had some issues with, with feelings of Zinfandel, Cherno Ridge. They got. Not equivalent fact. Zinfandel, Cherno Ridge project. Add. I assume you call for the, you know, community benefit. Uh, I, I'll tell you, I've spoken in several other. I business years about, yeah, we. You did a presentation of gross. Hey, we sell the lot, city gets one point six percent of the lot sale. Or is that percent, percent, sell home, a hundred percent higher. Yeah, the idea was there. So there's no damage to the developer if you want the other. Um, that's true. So those are, you could, Zinfandel maybe. Obviously, you want to pay it. Home price. And we, looking at one of the towers, we're coming to the thing that is, uh, there's. Details in the D A about how it could be used, you know, mainly for capital projects, those provisions that could be used for D A's project. Um, uh, so it's like having an impact fee that's, uh, uh, not subject to the eighty-six hundred requirements, um. You know, it's, uh. Extra. It's extra for the city for the. Five years. And the other detail, uh, in the middle of the non-playable location water lines, Zinfandel Parkway, um, they're building replacements. Line. Actually, the park. As the park is. Tied. Creating, that was available. So you can cut your water. That's actually something. E D W A pipeline agreement, it's supposed to do things to dirt water and, you know. That's still leaving. And obligations. Well, Parkway process, it's on parcel, uh, and then we get a parcel exchange. Basically, we have a hillside north of our, our ponds that's useless to us. Yeah. Next up. Uh, we ask for reservation capacity for forty-five lots, just in case kind of thing. I think also only on, but just in case, so that was granted and that's used up. Um, and of course, we were supposed to, uh, establish sole district, which is kind of the next, uh. So you've often heard the term metal roofs districts. Most people think of them as bonded debt build improvements. Um, that is included in the Zinfandel D A as an option, but the developer chose, we so far chose not to utilize that. Um, but there is a requirement, the conditions approval, that's, that's much out of order, the D A, that they will do a C F D for a special task for ongoing maintenance. So it's what we'll do a process, uh, sorry, I'm a bit nervous. Um, we did, uh, estimates for the cost of maintenance with footways and landscaping and all the public stuff that's in Zinfandel, Cherno Ridge. Um, and, uh, calculated it all out and gave up with an amount. It was over a thousand dollars a year. Some you probably know there tonight now, because it's index salsa, so it goes up. Um, and that was, they had to pay for the process to get that set up. We use a consultant, the N V S. Those these other down the state, uh, helped city go through the process to get established. It's grew by, you know, landlords, which of course at times just developer. Um, and then it's passed on to people by the homes. Um, and it includes reserves and all the costs involved, all this stuff. Uh, and I mentioned there's a necessary mechanism, so. I'll come back to that point. The issue was probably safety cats. The, the, again, city was concerned about funding additional police and fire services. Uh, and that was a good shaded number of five hundred dollars a building unit, and it's indexed. So it's not allowed, but there's fifty dollars a parcel out of the one unit. N V S manages that process also, so they were kind of. Act letting and so forth, it was a long tax bill. Um, and, uh, change for all that, we did not acquire the project to join the Amber Fire Protection Center. This is, you know, we have a little bit of a little contention, I guess, between city and, and A P D. Have a pretty good relationship with current fire marshals, I did previous ones, and they, you know, how can we get more money out of the city for fire services? You're under a contract, you need to go take the contract. Well, we got some money and, and. I, I suppose the sheriff has called the city manager over the years and asked the same kind of question. Well, yeah, contract and services, you've got a revenue stream and we specifically, in the discussions at the time, were. We're not going to let the two of them decide how much money to get. We're clipping this much money, we'll decide how it's split up based on service. So here's the conversation. Okay, uh, so goals, this. Probably one of the more important slides, and I put the thing down here with red. The city council adopted these goals. You know, in a session on D A's, talk about what do you want from the state, and this is what we wound up. Uh, protect current residents from possible renovation city services due to increased demands. Okay, so that was a whole highly addressed app of taking tax on new homes, increase property capture of the, new construction. They do all the infrastructure and maintenance for, for the D A. So. Got the check back and off. Um, protect the utility customer for rate increases due to cost of new construction, uh, improvements. And, you know, your rates pretty much cover that to do ongoing maintenance and the pressure for water and sewer. Um, and, uh. So pretty straightforward plus, uh, I didn't actually put it in here, but the, uh. I said earlier, start appreciation, city, but it's, I don't. That involved the U S debt service. We had a grant that covered the city's existing residents' share of the project. But there was capacity to issue about, the city basically under cover that. So we're making debt service statements like, it was a number of thousand years or something like that. Um, and then we just start prepaying water impact fees before they even start developing. So they helped the city get through that additional period. Um, they, they paid out savings, a couple hundred thousand, about four hundred thousand like that. Uh, over the, over the first few years, helped the city get through that time. And in theory, as we had more customers, we had enough revenue to cover that. Say, I have a city commission just a couple days ago. Population.
Yes.
That's less than what it was.
Right. It was about fifty-two in.
It was around 52 in the 90s.
Is that, that's an error? Let's work this shot. Yeah, so I. You obviously have the development. The impact fees, they make the fees, and so we went through a process, we updated your water, sewer, and street speeds. So they pay on. Their potential investments, they're covered. Your. Your other fees generally. Water sewer and streets are pretty updated. They're hard to get at that age where it probably shouldn't. That's relative for the process. We have to look, complete new next study on other fees, it's something. Studying this stuff. Mission didn't include parks and rec, but the, it's pretty general plan. And now I'm going to tell you that doing a fee study is pretty simple. It shouldn't cost a whole lot of money, because it's basically long edition. And you follow the format that the state requires, that are all pretty much canned reports, that could be, oh, you haven't seen a report, but that's somebody else's city statement. Bill checking out, right? The work. Needed. And. Police master plan. I believe in 2006. So that's where all the. Mission is to staff too, so we paid attention to that. Because I've seen buzzles, you know, come through, that, oh, we can do your piece there. It's the work and coming up with that. And the. We have to put my extensions into the parkway. So, yeah, he take away for this recitation is, are these goals okay? Time to get started. Could be a look at some point. Other agency permits, if there's something involved, sometimes you can run into a problem where you need to get a wastewater permit amended, because you, that's those conditions that we. We sure live in our wastewater capacity. That's just. A whole lot. We see apartments, guess we're. Before they can sell a lot, we've got a final map. Yes, you compare the final map. Very few developers, I've never seen one, must have built the improvements before they file a final map. They want to file the map. For to do that, they have those bonds, group security. Also, be able to see, that has to move. So, so you wind up seeing the final. That all takes. And what happens, you see what. Really on the map. So that was the baby phase. Prior to state law, you're basically. So that's standard, standard detail to those. That's goal. We can tweak that in the developer agreement, we can put it in the company agreement, but there's usually no reason to. Other than, as I mentioned earlier, we can tie certain groupness to certain levels of base. But whether they start here or start there, we typically cover that with the conditions, they say, maybe there is some. But whether the first phase has 25 lots, 30 lots, 50 lots. Of course, there's practical constraints and all that, market conditions, financing. All sort of online. So very important. And then, of course, how's they actually do it? And those, those things then, that I mentioned, that was triggers. 39, drain, door. Oh, Ridge there, that's what other. Over from that Ridge line all the way up to the wastewater plant. That's, that's just. That and nature of the beast, so they're worried about. But it's a, it's a extra expense of the, you know, those communities, it's kind of shown, but right now. And of course, all this is all tied to the map act and their timeframes, but more in case. So keep heads. And I want to talk more about capital facilities fees, that I was going to do it here, but I started on earlier, so I. But, yeah. And I let, I ended on these because it's money, and that's everything revolves around that. If the process of a plan check is covered under your ordinances. Be scheduled for a lot of these things, most of it's time and material. And it's going to be staged, you know, it's specified, be scheduled. I should have mentioned, one of the things that I would ask you to do at first, starting here, is try to bring together a company, it's the schedule of all your fees. To a lot. And scan your options, resolutions, and I have to force city clerk, they can back you all, and you'll, I want to get copies of it. So I actually put together a binder of all the history of the earnings streams. And then it'll be scheduled, and it's that updated every year. Most of the beans are tied to either CPI, insurance, construction cost index. It's all spelled out that way, many resolutions. So city engineer, staff, just do that. Everybody, city engineer, get them involved and guarantee that, so. Building permits have their own set of fees, tied to the legal laws adopted, not to clear that. So. Please, very much, but that's, yeah. Already in the ordinances, and we've already thought about that slowly. So that. In that show. It's the development process. So we are at this point. I love you.
Okay, I.
And I hope you're good.
And I just wanted to reiterate that Richard used San Diego Ridge and Shenandoah as examples in order to do the overview. But our questions, comments should be related to an overview of planning processes and procedure, not an individual project.
Right, but as I think I alluded during the presentation, that this is kind of what we're working with. So going forward, if there's stuff here that you don't think is going to be appropriate for going forward, say something earlier than later. Yeah, that I can, I'm saying, bring me back for another meeting, whatever you want to do.
Right, I was just talking about in terms of this to start.
Catch the workshop, that moving the topic. This is a no action. Questions in the commission or council? I will stick to my experience, but I. Like that, so it's incorporated. Ask for a development plan. The plan at the time. Standard conditions, starting. My time is over. 5008. Take time, they wanted that shot, they asked. Not through meetings, force it off. You can certainly.
That's a value of our. Most. Code for something that you want to project and. Yeah, so that's.
Sure, I understand. First line. And itself is. You know, I've heard comments to that effect, but it really. Well, law, after maybe some case law, I didn't want to get away. But it more depends on what's changed. If you've had a lot of developments and your general plan is used up, all those cul-de-sac areas are all. Change your sphere of influence and all that, yeah, you need a new general plan. But if nothing's happened, everything is still the same. That's, that's pretty standard engineering, pretty difficult. But as I mentioned, the state.
And with all their decom, and everything, the proposals. They're going to. Not strong. Having the open ditch. It's just become a problem. Seriously, and it's responsible for maintaining the corners, some. Trying to prevent the pipe and the lock and the other things. To eliminate the ditches in front of the places. You know, it's worrying, the new project going forward. We've got to stick up a strong standard. On the, the. Cross-sections of the streets, sidewalks, and the. Infrastructure on the streets, so that they.
So the, the project that is, is opposed, is not the same as ZIMLPA, it's more conventional. Per better sidewalk, right? Yes. Is it good? I'll leave that to you. Yeah, it's not, it'll all be coming out with the DIR and all that process. But they are, but their, their proposal is for, for. Sidewalks.
And let's try to keep it to process and each other overview.
Richard, were you involved in the curbs and guys in Nowridge?
So.
Cause they, they seem, they seem really, really random, random in this way.
Yeah.
You know, the, the lower part of the road is not, doesn't have the, then you have the, the curb where it directs water, the upper, upper part of the road does, which is, is used so their water comes down, because right people try to, right.
Okay, okay.
So I would like this, this was, this is one of these days. Cause I, I had that good design, I did not review it, I was aware of it, you know. So my question is, is it being done properly on the face street? Uh.
That is not part of this question, and it's not on the agenda. If you want to submit that question to Richard and have him respond in writing, that would be. We're sticking to agenda, and this is an overview and process workshop.
As I said, I started that when I said.
In application project, where, where and when is the, the requirement for public.
It's required as part of the environmental process, which is just getting started.
Or is it, the future project, we have no EIR, EIR.
Well, that's pretty hard.
And there, there, I mean, there's other public hearings along the way too. I mean, it's not just the environmental that requires a public hearing, but the, the maps and the use permits and the DAs and all that.
But will be a round of, round of hearings for a planning commission and recommendations, planning mission.
Where, where, where did, where did public get? It's there, creating a lot sizes and, and that type of thing with it. It appears it. At, at this point, they don't have much. Public has had much chance of getting.
Well.
Any flexibility on the.
No. Really, it's more upper, the developers proposing a project. And this is what I want to build. If, if the. Sides are already in performance of the general plan and. Hard for us to get them to change it, unless you. Developer. So, not there yet. Those hearings will, that. Tended map is a publicly available topic. Sierra, she works right there. Turn the member away. Sorry. Um, really smart, oh, I can't believe that, I can't be put part of that.
No, no, we're not, we're not, we're not.
I heard that. Frank said if I comes up like that, I'd be. Yeah, well, I apologize.
I think I was more specifically asking about.
He's better.
He needed an excuse.
By the way, great, great, great presentation. Very good, I learned a lot. Do you also?
Yeah, hey, hey, we just run. The other thing is, on mitigation, do we have an oak tree or not? And she.
Yes.
And are they, are they, everyone bound by that even in, in the.
Uh, unless we do something different in the development agreement, yes.
Cause I was horrified. What the decrees that are taken out of state for. General contract only the two hundred fifty oak trees can be taken out of state for.
And I'm not going to Sierra about that. This is it, all right?
Yeah. Again, I think we are trying to stick towards process, not project specific. So if there are project specific, like, questions.
But that's, yeah, that's, that's the next step.
If I'm, if I'm correct, our ordinance for the city is not oak specific, it's called heritage tree ordinance.
But I think the only here in trees are oaks, yeah.
I know, so, I mean, but one of the problems I always had with that ordinance, and I'm skipping a little bit, is that that language.
Is there, if we go with the development, does it, how it will have the ability to create lots size?
Yeah.
And I, I don't see any one. I don't see whether. The responsibility, in, in one of the. Things we're trying to resolve in work, stated that there shouldn't be any impact. I want it to be. This will now just start. You did. Today.
Was asking about. On projects, as you mentioned, one was done for Sydney Dell, and showed those positive. We all aware of that? We have a.
Okay. Uh, where, did I understand that you were recommending that there should be an update of the.
Came this close.
Yeah, it was pretty close. Um, I think you. I don't like that conversation.
Those were seven, fifteen years.
No, no.
That, that, all those.
I, as I mentioned, the water sewer and streets is fairly recent, so. And that, this is, probably need, the, the scope, they're too good. The, um, what issue want to build? You know, let me give you a example, there. A few that were done for, always that separate fee for city hall to manage. One project. Um, it was a cost estimate that I'm sure is way out of date. And so some left, well, the general plan. Lot, oh, that original, next, oh. So the city hall into visioned at that time, probably too small for a city the size that your general plan will look towards. But it's probably not a one-to-one type ratio. I mean, a city hall needs to have a certain number of, you know, you know, certain amount of space, and it can serve a pretty wide range of population. And so the cost probably wouldn't go up all that much, but all of a sudden, you're dividing it by a whole lot more development. So the cost per home, though, goes back. I pull to the necessarily go up.
I'm in the construction industry, one of the things that, that you say that helps me is road maintenance and the cost of, of maintenance. We're in a world on earth, like. It's a real. And they're trying to do everything in the world to try to get, it looks like they're carrying.
Okay.
And so I'm sure they are studying.
So. Nexus studies on capital disill, are all filled at the first, they do not. So, uh, I totally agree that your public, the county probably needs a little bit doing a, a sales tax measure for road maintenance. There's a whole lot of big money for this. It's coming, especially your program, it's coming up with matching money to get state money. Uh, we're just getting ready to do a project in Lowdy, for a presentation from Art. Only, uh, of state to do this project. Matching money.
This, um, the capital class.
Yeah, that's.
Outrage, outrage.
Again, there, we don't use, uh, guy, we use the entry of user, or construction cost index, that's better.
But it's still, it's going, it's just as a last year.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure what the index is done, but we can find out. It's stretched out through agreement and. I'll hold that, so we're going to be back to city council with discussion about.
Okay, we need to plan, we need to probably, what's happening, the street is under.
Yes.
And.
Hasn't done.
And we need to do that, and. The parts themselves, construction, I'm amazed, we got it. Zip it down, it's get complete. Or side, which is finished and. That's, she, I take a look and see why, which a whole lot of opening. We don't have meetings.
Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the overview of the presentation? Is there an?
I have one question. You, this is a. Where we start close, and we're building further. How is that handled? On a term. You do your, early on, then you find out that we've developed the easy part, now we're going to the hard part. Are, are they? Et again, in regards to how these fees are assessed, or?
So are you referring to Zip it all specifically?
Well, basically, because that's what we're talking primarily here, and the water is different for, when you get into the up above, and also your development is different when you get into the higher elevation too than what they developed initially.
So.
I'm just curious on how.
In those cases, the developer pays for all of the improvements that are within the project. There may be a few exceptions, but in cases of the note, it's pretty much everything that's in the dollar bad form. So it's really up to the developer to look at other projects that's going to be phased, and what are the big ticket items that have to come later, and make sure that they budget accordingly. Uh, city's really not directly involved in that. For projects that are funded under the impact fee program, we look at more of a long, long-term average, we've got construction costs, but contingency background, when we set the visa, and then they're indexed to the construction cost index, so these are adjusted for that index on an annual basis. So as Mr. Culver mentioned, there's been a recent uptick in construction cost prices that will get reflected in the index. Will be enough over the long term.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions in city hall regarding the presentation? Are there any questions from anyone on soon regarding the presentation?
I would be able to teach you this.
Yes. I want to, I'd like to thank Richard Prima for providing the overview. I think it's important for the adjoint sessions, and especially workshops about, I'm going to say it again, process and procedure, so that everyone gets an understanding, because planning is sometimes difficult, and it's a moving target sometimes as well, and it's hard for people to understand the difference in what you can do under a development framework, as an example, and how everything else has to be in compliance with your general plan. So it's.
I'm going to disagree with you, planning is always.
So thank you very much.
Love.
Thank you also, Aaron. Getting his jerk.